... and let the voters decide. So it takes a lot to get on, I'd say onstage, but we're in front of the tables here, and state your case, and we appreciate you doing that, and I think the residents of Milton do as well, so thank you all for being here. I do want to recognize a few members of Appen Media and Milton Herald staff who are here. Let's see. Hayden. Hayden. Hayden someone is a new reporter with Appen Media, so welcome Hayden. And I thought I saw Shelby. Is Shelby here? Not here yet. Okay. And then I'm going to call him an Appen Media designee for the night. Friend of the newspaper, Mr. Charlie Lancelot is here to help us with our timer, so thank you Charlie for being here. And Amber, I hope you can give Charlie a bit more of an introduction here in just a minute, and let everyone know how you met him, and I think it's just a great story and very cool. And then also Amber Perry is our moderator here for the night. Amber does a lot of coverage for Milton. She also does coverage in Johns Creek and some businesses all over the place, but is our main point person for Milton Herald, especially city government news. So she's got a lot to bring to the table as we are moderating here tonight. And then also, almost forgot him, but that would have been okay, my brother Carl Appen, he's on the ones and twos over here. Carl got this whole thing set up and really organized this thing, so I'm really appreciative of it. Carl runs our newsroom, so all the reporters report to Carl. He helps keep news flowing, making sure everything's getting in the paper, online. He is probably one of the folks you will talk to the most if you call into the office with news tips or want to discuss a story, that sort of thing. So Carl, good guy to know. And then just lastly, I do want to say that Appen Media, the Milton Herald, we don't make any money putting these debates on. It's just part of what we see as our mission and our obligation to the community as your local newspaper, to put forums like this on as often as we can. We don't ask for anything in return, but if you were so inclined, last year we started something called the Appen Press Club. It's something new. It's something that a lot of community newspapers around the country are trying. It's kind of a membership-oriented, membership-based support vehicle for local news. So people out in the community, readers who appreciate what we do, who want to make sure we stick around for a while, they can actually join the Appen Press Club. There's a monthly fee, kind of like you would pay your Netflix, or you can pay annually. And if you want to find out more information, you can go to appenmedia.com/join. We would love to have you. And with that, I'm going to touch on just a few rules here so that we're all on the same page, so bear with me. Okay, if you'll humor me, I'm just going to read through this as quickly as I can. Okay, so for the audience, no talking, applause, booing, heckling, et cetera during the Q and A portion. We're also asking folks not to wave signs or anything that would obstruct anybody's view. I don't see any, so I think we're okay. Campaign stickers, buttons, t-shirts, that kind of stuff is all right. I saw some campaign signs out by the street on their way in. Absolutely, that's all good. All right, so a little bit on the structure of the debate tonight. Each candidate is going to get two minutes to make an opening statement. The numbers for those statements are going to be, have they already been drawn, or are they going to be drawn? They're going to be drawn here in just a minute. Candidate A, the first candidate that's drawn will be known as candidate A, the second candidate, candidate B, and the third candidate, candidate C. Each candidate will be allowed to bring a written opening statement and closing statement if they so choose, though no additional material is allowed. So they can have one blank sheet of paper and one pen, but that's it. Candidates have been asked to leave their cellphones in their seats or with a significant other and not bring them onstage. So Q and A, this is after the opening statements. The majority of questions will be directed at all three candidates. The order will be determined by the numbers drawn for opening statements. So candidate A will have one minute to answer a question. Then candidate B will have one minute to answer a question, followed by 30 seconds for candidate C. Then candidate B will answer the second question with a minute, followed by a minute for candidate C, and then 30 seconds for candidate A, and so on and so on. Important to note, unless a candidate is directly mentioned, there will be no cross rebuttals. So each candidate will get only one shot to speak on each question. That'll be a little bit different than some of the debates you may have seen on TV or something like that. We're not looking for a lot of cross rebuttal on these things. We've got a lot of great substantive questions to ask, so in the interest of getting them all in, Amber may skip the third candidate's response at times, or she may just ask that candidate, "Do you have anything else to add?" We don't anticipate this is going to happen a lot, but again, just in the interest of time, we're going to try and keep things moving. Amber may also ask follow-up questions to responses directed at one or more of the candidates if she so chooses. This decision will be determined by time and the content of each response. As I said, there are a few questions specifically for incumbents and the candidates who have not yet held office. For these questions, the recipients will each have one minute, and then the other will have 30 seconds if they have anything to add. As I mentioned, Charlie Lancelot is going to be keeping time for us. He's sitting next to Amber, and will alert everyone when a candidate's time is nearing an end and when that time has ended. Essentially, he's going to raise a sign with 15 seconds remaining, and then again at the end. If the candidate continues to speak when time is over, he or Amber will make that known. For closing statements, each candidate gets two minutes to make a closing statement. Candidate A, as determined by opening statement, number drawn from the hat, will go first. Candidate B will go second, and candidate C will go third. We do encourage you to applaud after closing statements. We encourage all candidates to shake hands, fist bump, elbow bump, and wave when they're finished, and they're more than welcome to mingle with the audience and answer additional questions afterward. But with that, that's the rules, and I'd like to invite Doug Haney, who's running unopposed, to give a opening statement. Doug?
While Doug is giving his opening statement, the three candidates in the back will hold on. They won't be paying attention to what I have to say. Do I get longer than two minutes then? Just kidding. Two minutes is really short, so. This will be a bit like speed dating. I've practiced this a couple of times. It's hard to get it all in two minutes, so am I ready to start? Awesome. So I'm Doug Haney. I'm originally from here. I graduated from Milton High School in 1995, went to the University of Georgia, studied finance, played ball for the Dogs, met my wife. We'll have been married for 24 years in March. We have two boys, 19 at Sanford and 16 at Kings Ridge. I've been involved in this community for a really long time, like 30-plus years. You go back to my time in high school, to anything from Young Life to church, multiple churches. We're now at Stone Creek, Kings Ridge, I've been involved. Most recently, I've been involved on the Design Review Board. From that, I got involved at the district at Mayfield, the steering committee. I'll talk about that again in just a second. The three things that I've been kind of running on most importantly are integrity and transparency, ensuring that what the city government does is exactly what it's supposed to do. No more, no less, no undermined conversations, no backdoor conversations, none of that. What propelled me to run for office is some of what happened around the District III voting location. We'll table that for later. We can have that conversation offhand. Secondly, would be protecting property rights, and I'll get to that in a second. And the third is protecting us as citizens with ensuring that we have enough police and that the police we have are equipped to do their job. So back to Design Review Board and the district at Mayfield, the way we did that is the way you protect property rights. We had a huge forum much like this. We invited all the people from the community to come. They gave all their input. We took their input. We created a plan, came back a couple of weeks later, did the same thing again. We did that three times. We had input from all of the community. We created a plan that third time that most everybody was really good with. From there, that plan went to DRB, BZA, and City Council. No one made a decision outside of how to preserve those buildings or how to develop that part of town without all those folks being in agreement, and City Council had to agree to that. That is exactly how we should be developing and taking care of our city. So the last thing I'm going to say is yes, I have raised a ton of money. The reason why I've raised a ton of money is because I'm not doing this one time. I plan on delivering on the things that I've said I'm going to, and I'm going to run again in four years, and I will have a chest ready for me when we get there. This is my town, and I'm going to serve y'all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Doug. And I just, I want to thank Doug for coming. Like I said, he is running unopposed, so he didn't have to be here tonight, but I do appreciate you coming and getting in front of the voters, so thanks, Doug. All right, so I understand that as Doug was giving his opening statement, we drew numbers in the back. So the drawing was candidate A, and as I say your name, if you want to come on up, candidate A, Carol Cookerly; candidate B, Phil Cranmer; and candidate C, Rick Morik. Let's give a big round of applause for all the candidates being here tonight. I'd like to formally introduce your moderator for the night, Ms. Amber Perry.
Hi, everybody. Amber Perry here, moderating the debate. Thank you for being here. So I do have several questions that we need to get through. Many of them did come from the community, and they're on the mind of Milton voters. So first, I want to say, councilmembers Cookerly and Morik, as incumbents, you may see more questions to allow you the opportunity to address your track record as city officials, but Mr. Cranmer, you might be asked questions that won't be asked of the incumbents considering your newer position in the political arena. And to be fair, I will be rotating through each of you to allow you to give first responses. So the first theme that we're going to come across, there's four total, the first theme is city governance. And for each theme, you will be allowed to give two-minute responses, basically to platform the theme, and then once again, a minute per response, and then the third candidate, 30 seconds. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and start with Councilwoman Cookerly, candidate A. If you could just provide your platform, two minutes on city governance.
On city government? Governance?
Opening statement. Opening statement. Four categories.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Sorry. My bad. Okay, yes. Please start with your opening statement.
So free fall, right?
Yes. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Carol Cookerly. Thrilled to be here tonight. I have been on the City Council for five years, and if you have one takeaway of me, I hope that you will think of me as independent-minded. I'm not controlled by anybody. I don't equivocate. I have strong opinions. I am negotiable for the betterment of this city. I've been honored to work with so many good people, and we have struggled through many issues together, but overall, it's been a pleasure. Been here for 30 years, and when I moved up from Buckhead, I said I will do anything I can to keep this area from becoming overcrowded. Thus, my involvement in the city, first with the Green Space Fund, and now in the City Council. Well, what I want to talk about quickly is this jewel of the city. If you think about your tax bill, the pie chart, only 15% of it goes to Milton. 1% is the Green Space Fund. Okay? But think about this. We reduced the millage rate for two years. We have a AAA bond rating. We do pay-as-you-go, which means we don't take on debt. We have very minimal debt. So then, we have the best quality of life in so many measurements. You know, we get on these wards, our whole staff is just fantastic in what they're achieving. So with the best quality of life, how do you measure that? Well, we have less density. That's intentional, but yet our spending is less per capita. I mean, let this sink in, how great this city is doing. It's been a lot of teamwork since the inception of the city, and I've been a strong voice on minimizing density. These numbers excite me, but what excites me more is what's going on under the hood. Our mitigation efforts are working, our density mitigation efforts. The trophy club, the former trophy club, the golf course, that could be eligible for 135 to 140 lives. Our community development, am I out of time? Boy, that goes fast. Well, hold on until the finish. Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Cranmer, you can go next.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. It's an honor to be here. Thank you to the church. Thank you to Amber and the rest of the crew from Appen for hosting us, and thank you to the citizens for coming out. It is truly an honor to be here. My name is Phil Cranmer. My wife and I have resided in Milton for 17 years. We have two beautiful daughters of the age of 12 and 9. My day job, I'm a marketing vice president for a medical device firm based out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and I've been involved in the community for quite some time. I currently serve as the HOA president for our community. I've had the opportunity to serve on the Parks and Rec Board for the past seven to eight years. I am Rick's appointee and grateful for the opportunity, and very involved in our church and local charities. Our church is just down the road in Alpharetta. This really is just an opportunity for me to continue giving back to the community. Why am I running? There's an opportunity. There's a huge opportunity for the city. There's an opportunity to get rid of special interests at a city hall. There's a huge opportunity to get rid of partisan politics at a city hall. There's an opportunity to re-channel the city resources to matters that matter most to the citizens. There's an opportunity to get rid of this dark cloud that is sitting over Milton. You don't have to read but the Herald Weekly, that's a free plug by the way, to see that our brand is being tarnished. We can do better than that. We can do better than that. There's some stark contrast between my opponent and I, and I'll just take them head-on. The first is the polling location in District III, the district in which he resides. It's the most heavily-traveled corridor. It's the greatest population, and we have a brand-new public safety office that can house a polling location. I never would have voted against putting a polling location in District III. Highway 9, my opponent has had 16 years to put his fingerprint on this commercial corridor. I think I can do better. It has not changed much, if at all, in 16 years. And as far as land preservation and lower density, absolutely, 100%. I never would have voted twice to extend sewer twice in the city. Thank you.
Hello? Hello? You guys hear me? Hello? Okay, that's much better. Okay. Thanks for bearing with me. And sorry, Councilman Morik, can you go ahead?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank Carl, Hans, and Amber and the team at the Milton Herald for hosting this debate. Most of all, I'd like to thank you, the Milton residents, for coming out here tonight. I'm eager to discuss my thoughts on how we can continue to keep Milton as one of the best places in the country to live in and raise a family. Thank you for taking your time to be here. My family and I have lived here for 27 years. After moving here from Michigan with IBM, my wife and I raised our family here. We have three children, two girls and a boy. They're adults now, and two grandchildren. My oldest daughter, her husband, and the two grandchildren and their dog, Henry, decided to move back to Georgia in June from Philadelphia, and they actually will be making their new home in Milton. My background in this community begins long before Milton was formed. I'd been our HOA president for two years. I worked with Fulton County trying to get intelligent zoning and building standards. I worked side-by-side with Jan Jones and others to help put together the business plan for what is now Incorporated Milton, going door-to-door on weekends to gather people who had a choice to choose between Milton, Alpharetta, and Roswell. I served on the first city council, helping put together our police department, our fire department, and passing every ordinance. I was elected back on City Council in 2013, and I'm very proud of my service as a council member over the past 11 years. I'm very proud of the work I've done to actively shape Milton from its inception until today. Building community has always been my passion, whether serving as a chairman of Manny Oak's local elementary school, local advisory council, or Hopewell Middle School as a vice chair when we opened the school. I've served at North Point Community Church as a high school youth coach for the past 14 years, and have been active in our church in other areas. Life is about our families and the community that we live in and serve in. Today, we are at a critical crossroads for a great city. Understanding the things that I have done to protect Milton must be carried forward with our city council leadership in order to preserve the Milton that we all love and moved here for. Having served for 11 years and having a deep understanding of how we got Milton here, I also understand the key factors to preserve our great city well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morik. I'm just going to go ahead and dive into the first theme. Once again, many of these questions did come from the community, and these questions are in the minds of Milton voters. So once again, the first theme is city governance, and the question will be first directed to Mr. Cranmer. Milton just passed its fiscal year 2024 budget with $68.7 million in expenditures. How have you, or how would you, approach a document of this scope? This is a two-part question. How might you improve the city's budgeting process to allow for greater transparency or accessibility for the average resident?
Amber, I'll address the process question. I'll be very candid. I don't know every topic that's debated that comes in front of City Council, but if given the opportunity, I will ask the right questions. I will challenge the status quo, and I'm a quick learner. With regards to the process, I'm not an expert on the process, but I would certainly work with city staff and the key resources within City Hall to understand the allocation of those dollars and making sure that they're appropriately resourced accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Cranmer. And Councilwoman Cookerly, if you can go next.
Would you repeat the first part of the question, please?
Absolutely. Milton just passed its fiscal year 2024 budget with nearly $70 million in expenditures. How would you approach a document of this scope, or how have you?
In the last five years, we have streamlined the process substantially, and I'm happy to say, in the passage of the recent budget, we got, to my knowledge, no negative feedback on the transparency, the outreach, or the opportunity for input. It's been a very smooth process. We're trying to break it down so that people have access and can access distinct parts of it that might interest them. So unless you know differently or have input on that, it feels like that since we're starting earlier, that the process has gotten so much better. Always open to input on that, but I think we're in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cookerly. And Councilman Morik, you have 30 seconds to answer the question. Did you need me to repeat it?
Sure.
So Milton just passed its fiscal year 2024 budget with nearly $70 million in expenditures. How have you approached a document of this scope, and how might you improve the budgeting process to allow for greater transparency or accessibility for the average resident?
Okay, as far as the budget, we just passed a budget that's about $42 million. I've always been involved in looking at the budget, did when I was IBM. I think it's important that you actually get the budget, look through it. I think we, as Councilman Cookerly said, we have in fact streamlined, I've been working for the last four years to get the city staff to actually start bringing the budget to us a month earlier, because before, it used to be brought to us a week or two before we had to vote on it. So I think that gives us more opportunity for all of you to actually hear and participate, and then actually, for the last four years, I've been voting to actually reduce the city millage rate to actually keep taxes neutral for you instead of increasing.
Thank you, Councilman Morik. So the second question, I would like to first direct this to Mr. Cranmer. To what extent do you believe the city of Milton should collaborate with surrounding municipalities in Fulton County to provide services to Milton residents? Do you believe the city should operate largely on its own?
I do not. I think collaboration is key. I think it's vital to our city, and to the extent we can do it, we should continue doing that. I believe we do reciprocate on fire and police with Alpharetta, and I believe Roswell, and to a large extent, Forsyth and Cherokee, and fully support that collaborative effort.
Thank you, Mr. Cranmer. And Councilman Morik, if you could provide a response? Did you need me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good. Thanks. As far as collaboration, I think it's important. We're not competing with the cities that are surrounding us, especially when it comes to public safety, police, fire. That was one of the key initiatives that I worked on when we were trying to build this city, because we were sorely lacking up in this area. As far as cooperation, we do have cooperative agreements both on the police and the fire, and also the jail with our three surrounding communities. In fact, that's actually helped save lives. Recently, there was a lady who was choking and was unresponsive at Cabernet. Our fire department, our fire department went into Alpharetta, where the restaurant was, actually saved her life, and today, we have a grandmother, a mother, who actually is here because of our public safety. So I think it's important that we do work together collaboratively.
Thank you, Councilman Morik. And Councilwoman Cookerly, you have 30 minutes, or 30 seconds to respond. Excuse me.
Finally! Finally, I got what I need.
Did you need me to repeat the question?
No, no, I'm good. So our police officers are cross-sworn, which means that we can back up Alpharetta, Alpharetta can back us up, so they're cross-sworn. Our fire, our agreement with Alpharetta is whoever's closer, you go. It's extremely important, but we also have to talk about our sports, things like football, gymnastics, agreements with Alpharetta. There's a lot more in the mix, and we need to do that. It's very cost-efficient. When we have our fifth fire station on Providence Road, it will be very helpful in the greater mix of fire safety. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My next question goes to Councilman Morik, so we kind of just touched on this, but Alpharetta Milton have a reciprocity agreement for public safety, and to some degree, youth league sports programs as well as various camps. How do you view the relationship between Milton and Alpharetta, and what are your plans for that relationship going forward? And this is a two-part question. Would you consider teaming up with Alpharetta for park space?
What was the last part, I'm sorry?
Would you consider teaming up with Alpharetta for park space?
Okay. I think, I had mentioned earlier, we actually have cooperative agreements. I think we've got very good working agreements between our cities. I will continue to encourage, foster that. That includes also getting to know the other council members from the different city and the mayor. I've worked with Jim Gilvin in the past. As far as the parks and cooperative agreement, we, a few years ago, we kind of went our separate ways because of cost. We were actually subsidizing $500,000 of our money to actually participate, but now I think we've got more of an opportunity. I think as we've brought more park space online, we're more attractive with Alpharetta. Actually, they want to use our fields because we now have good fields. Some of them are better than theirs. So I would continue to encourage that.
Thank you. And Mr. Cranmer, could you respond? Did you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I got it. With regards to teaming up with Alpharetta, we used to have an MOU that was very much more comprehensive, and Councilmember Morik touched on it, but we were paying roughly $500,000 a year to Alpharetta. So that MOU, as we know it, dissolved. There's a new MOU in place where we do offer residents non-residential fees, or residential fees in Alpharetta, mainly for NAFL football and gymnastics. There probably is an opportunity to expand that and further collaborate with Alpharetta, and certainly would be open to those conversations.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cookerly?
Thank you. One of the ways that we got to this lowest spending per capita is through agreements with surrounding cities and doing smart things like that, so I'm always open-minded to it. We are in need of four diamonds and two rectangular fields, so certainly for the kids, for sports, so certainly that's important. And as we look at intergovernmental agreements, Alpharetta is certainly on the list in what can we do to service our population. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next question for Councilwoman Cookerly. Milton reduced the property tax rate for fiscal year 2024. Would you rather see lower tax bills or there be more funding for city amenity?
And as we look at intergovernmental agreements, Alpharetta is certainly on the list in what can we do to service our population. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next question for Councilwoman Cookerly. Milton reduced the property tax rate for fiscal year 2024. Would you rather see lower tax bills, or there be more funding for city amenities and possible future needs?
Well, it's always popular to say I would like the rate to go down, down, down. But I think we've hit a sweet spot where it's not onerous, and we've certainly found a balance where we can pay as we go and not incur debt. But with things in the offing that we need, such as active park space, and we're always needing fire equipment, we're always needing police equipment, I'm not in favor just gratuitously saying it needs to go any lower, because we are among the lowest at this point with two millage rate decreases in the last two years. I think we're in a good spot. Now, I'm not saying I'm not open-minded, I just have to see the numbers.
Thank you. And Councilman Morrig?
As far as funding additional amenities, I think what's really important is that they actually are essential services or amenities that people want to use. So I think we need to continue to get input from residents. As far as the taxes, we continue to grow. We've had more commercial development, so we're collecting more property taxes where we used to have vacant space, the same way with our subdivisions. I think there's always room to see if you can do things more efficiently. I think you have to continue to look at other ways to improve the processes that we have and gain efficiencies. I think there is room still to actually lower our taxes. But again, you have to look and make sure that you work through what the actual budget is, and that's something that I've been very involved in for the last 10 years.
Thank you. And Mr. Kramer?
I think it's just the analysis of the budget and understanding what services are required for the city and what the residents want. I think of the 2040 comprehensive plan, do we have the funding to support that and execute it with excellence? That would be my determination on the budget.
Thank you. All right, the next question for Mr. Kramer. Milton received roughly $34 million from the Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax voters passed in 2016. The tax was renewed in 2021 and is estimated to bring in another $36 million in transportation dollars, possibly more based on current projections. How beneficial do you think T-SPLAST has been for Milton?
Very beneficial, and we got to spend every dollar of it. Milton has become very congested. It's become more arduous to travel across town. The rate of speed has increased significantly through Milton. We got to use those dollars to make it safer and more effective to travel within Milton.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cookerly?
I've been thrilled with T-SPLAST. Putting $37 million in our coffers is the reason why we have the roundabouts so that we're not clogged up. I was trying to think the other day, are we up to 11 roundabouts? And while they're not perfect, they're certainly excellent in many ways. We're also building out, as you come out of some roundabout, some traffic calming tables so that people don't go speeding down the road to, you know, make up for any time or whatever. So T-SPLAST covers a lot of opportunities and projects. It's been a lifesaver for this little town.
Thank you. And Councilman Morrig?
Yeah, T-SPLAST, I think, has been great. That's a tax that actually is shared across the county, so anybody who spends anything with sales tax, we get our share up here. So it's not you directly having it in a millage rate where you have to pay for. As Councilwoman Cookerly said, that we've used a lot of the funds actually to do the roundabouts. We're also doing some speed studies to see what we can do to try to slow down traffic. That's a little bit more arduous, because we have to work with GDOT to try to get them before we actually change any speed limits. But I'm fully supportive of it, because I think it's saved us as taxpayers a lot of money and improved our roads.
Thank you, Councilman Morrig. The next question is for Mr. Kramer. Residential makes up 86% of Milton's tax base. Can Milton survive on a dominantly residential tax base? Please define what a healthy commercial tax base would look like.
Yeah, if we want lower taxes, I think we have a pathway to get there. Let's expand and improve our commercial corridors. We've done a great job in Birmingham, we've done a great job in Crab Apple. I think we have an opportunity to shift that percentage when we do something with Highway 9 in Deerfield. It's a hidden gem. We've just left it sort of linger, and blight has started to creep in, and look at Fry's, it's a good example. I think we have a huge opportunity to increase the commercial tax base and take that burden off the residential tax base.
Thank you. And Councilman Morrig?
Yes, I'd say we're not trying, Milton is not trying to be like other cities. When we started out, we definitely were more on the residential side, but we did the cost study back with Jan Jones and a group of us to make sure that we in fact wouldn't raise the tax above what Fulton County was taxing us. As far as the building and development, I think we, you know, we can say things about Highway 9, but there's still private property owners who own that. We're working quarterly, sitting down with the owners of those properties, looking at redevelopment opportunities. Mr. Fry, I've met with him personally, he's come out to actually talk to us, so we are looking at opportunities. When we get to some areas that we think will be good, as far as development, that's something that will come before all of you, so you've got an opportunity to give input. So I think, I think Highway 9 probably has a lot of potential. That's probably our biggest area for redevelopment. We still have a few parcels that are not developed yet, but I think it's, we have to be intelligent in how we actually do that.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cookerly?
Would you repeat it till I get all the nuances of that question, please?
Absolutely. Residential makes up 86% of Milton's tax base. Can Milton survive on a dominantly residential tax base? Please define what a healthy commercial tax base would look like for Milton.
I'm going to answer the question with affirmative yes. It can survive with a predominantly residential tax base. It has, and it's because of all the things that, you know, all the questions that dovetailed nicely is to look at our lower density than everyone else has, and yet our spending per capita is the lowest. So it's, and we're residential. Highway 9 will be interesting. We need to make it more Milton-esque. But if we get, if we decide we want too many amenities and more density, then we're going to have to go with more commercial to pay for it, and I don't want to do that.
Thank you. And Councilman Morrig? Issues within White Columns have made their way into council chambers. What do you believe should be the city council's position in HOA matters? Are there times when the city should intervene, or should those matters stay private?
HOAs have covenants that are registered with the county. Those are legal documents that actually supersede city documents. I don't think we need to be involved in HOAs, I believe in self-determination. Sometimes we have to look at our ordinances, if they're actually being weaponized against residents, there's different ways to look at how to improve upon that. But as far as the city being directly involved with HOAs, no, we don't. That's not our business, that's not for us to do. Those communities, you buy into it, you buy into the HOA, you play, you pay the dues. That's for you to actually work within your own community. And I've done that both as HOA president up in Michigan for two years, and then also in our HOA down here.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cookerly?
Well, with all due respect, I think that some HOA issues certainly spilled over into council chambers, and as I sat there during a number of those proceedings, it occurred to me that so much of that could have been, we could have been helpful in solving some of that with rules and regulations behind the scenes, so that it wasn't this great big sort of fight out in council chambers. Understanding regulations, understanding legal constraints, et cetera, that's work that can be done behind the scenes. It doesn't have to start in council chambers. It can come to council chambers, but overall, you want to stay out of HOAs. Those are self-determining bodies. But I'm just talking about, if we need to be helpful, we can do it behind the scenes.
Thank you. And Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I agree. HOAs have their own bylaws, their own covenants. The city does not need to be a super HOA.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Cookerly? In the past year, the city has seen an ethics case concerning one councilman go before an attorney panel board. Some say the initial complaint was frivolous and that the panel was incentivized. Others say the conclusion of the ethics case was justified. What are your thoughts about the way Milton handles ethics complaints?
It's a, it's a very good question. It's a bit of an emotional question, depending on where you are in the issue. I would say that I have to stand by the process, because you feel that, okay, so there's a jury there of these three lawyers that come in. I personally did not feel that all of the facts were examined, but also wasn't there every day. So I have to align with the verdict that was achieved and proceed accordingly. And I think that's sort of an honest answer to an honest feeling. But when those things come up, and they will come up, then the process, we stand by the process, or we fall by the process. So I stand by the process.
Thank you. And Mr. Kramer?
I think the process has room for improvement. I think the current process inhibits a legitimate concern to be brought forth, in that that individual would then be on the hook for all legal costs. I think complaints should be brought forward to an independent panel that would do the diligence, and if found that there is credence to that case, then the onus falls to the city. I think there's huge improvement for our current ethics process.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Morrig?
I was back here when we first started the city, and we had an ethics panel, we had people that were citizens that were put in place. What we witnessed at that time were people coming out and making political statements through ethics charges. That's not what an ethics panel is for. We've revised our ethics, our ethics ordinance a number of times. I think we can continue to look at it. I think we have to be careful about saying that we're going to cover all expenses. I think that could open us up to where we could start to get frivolous charges come forward, but I think you can always look at, is there a better way to improve?
Gotcha, thank you. And now I'm going to dive into public safety. The first question is for Mr. Kramer. How does public safety rank in your list of priorities?
It's very high. It's very high, especially in light of a lot of the crime that has crept into Milton. I've had a lot of friends in communities that have had homes broken into. I'm glad to hear that our police staff is fully at staff for the first time in a long time. That's encouraging. I'm glad to see that our pay rates are now equal to that of Alpharetta and other local municipalities, as we've been competing for talent, and I think that's in large part why we're able to be at full staff. That's a huge priority for me within this community.
Thank you. And Councilman Morrig?
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, when I started on council, when we formed the city, public safety was one of my top priorities, still is. We were rated the second safest city in the state of Georgia just recently for 2021. That's with statistics with Department of Justice and FBI. So I continue to support the good work that our police have done. I've seen some publications that have said that crime has increased 300%. I don't know if those are cherry-picked figures, but as far as the police, I did vote for increasing the pay. As far as equipment, we've improved what they actually have. We've improved our dispatchs. We actually can start to know where the cars are, so we can actually allocate and get people quicker when we have issues from a crime standpoint.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cookerly?
Well, one thing to know about me, I am all about safety all the time. Besides here in Milton, ensuring and leading the vote for, to get our police at maximum pay, because it's extremely competitive out there, and the attrition, it's tough, because other police departments are poaching and providing them with the very best equipment. It's always on my mind. I also serve on the Atlanta Police Foundation, which is a pretty high, very high-profile organization right now, and there are benefits to that that will accrue to Milton. So sign me up for all about safety.
Thank you. My next question is for Councilman Morrig. Would you agree that increasing the salary of public safety is a higher priority than spending on city projects like parks? Why or why not?
I don't think it's an either or. I think they're separate, I think we can do both. But as far as making sure that we adequately pay our police, as you've heard, we're fully staffed for the first time in a long time. We went through as a country, I think, some challenges which impacted us too, when we heard people trying to dismantle the police. I believe in our police officers, those people every day put their life on the line. They don't know what they're going to face. As far as choosing between ballfields or recreation and police, I don't think that's a fair question. I think you have to balance it out. But public safety is the, like I said, that was one of the first things we worked on and focused on when we actually formed the city, because we were sorely lacking up in this area. There were two police officers in unincorporated Fulton County, and they get pulled to South County. And many times, I saw even our neighborhood, if there was a call, it could even be for domestic, it could be 45 minutes before you see a police officer. That's not the case today. I'm very proud of our police department.
Thank you. And Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, listen, we need a safe environment first and foremost, right? The fun can come after that. We have to have adequate police staff. We have to have a city that is safe and nearly free from crime to the extent we can control that. Then comes parks. I do think as we grow as a city, all of our services have to grow commensurate with that, right? I know active parks has been a big hot topic in the city, but like any of our services, be it fire, right, be it the police, be it public works, economic development, all of our services have to grow commensurate, right, with the population growth that we're experiencing. Active Parks is just one of those services to help meet the needs, right, of the population that we currently reside with.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cookerly?
Well, I heard the other day that 80% of the purchases are cash purchases. So if we need additional money, maybe it's out there from the populace, and that's a joke. But I will say this, you already know how I feel about safety. I do believe we can always strike the balance. It's been happening for 15 years, but if we don't have, you know, safety is a gift that one generation gives to another. So your kids aren't going to be out on the ballfields if we don't have a safe environment. People move because of safety. It's happening all over the country. This city's going to be safe. There's no question about that.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer? What are some areas where you think public safety personnel in the city of Milton could benefit from additional training, such as answering mental health calls? Or do you feel like the city's public safety personnel are already appropriately trained?
Amber, that's a great question. I am not well-equipped to answer that with any level of detail. That's one of those topics that, again, if given the opportunity to represent Milton, one area that I will dig in and understand in making sure that our resources are appropriately deployed.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cookerly?
I'm sorry, please proceed.
Sure. What are some areas where you think public safety personnel in the city of Milton could benefit from additional training, such as answering mental health calls? Or do you feel like the city's public safety personnel are already appropriately trained?
It's always evolving. It's always evolving. I just alluded to the Atlanta Police Foundation. In Atlanta, we are building a large public safety training facility that is desperately needed in the area. And why is that important tonight? Well, where our police train, it's an abysmal facility. So I'm happy to report that through this relationship, I've already signed Milton up, that as soon as it opens, we have dibs on being able to train our police and fire on this facility. But if you ask the chief, the current situation of where training is, is abysmal. Mental health training, all of that is part of new police training, and it's incredibly important.
Thank you. And Councilman Morrig?
Yeah, I think this has been a focus. Training is always ongoing. You have to adapt and look at changing things within the different cities. We've got cooperative agreements with Alpharetta when it comes to SWAT. We actually share officers back and forth. I think those are some areas, and Councilwoman Cookerly hit on it too, we need to continue to improve what we can do as far as training facilities. I think we made a big step forward when we did our public safety complex. We now have our court right here, we have a way to actually hold our evidence, we don't have to check it in another place, which helps when we have cases. And then having police headquarters close and close to our biggest commercial district, I think, was a step forward. But I think we can always continue to look at areas to improve, including how can we share with training facilities with the surrounding cities.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cookerly? What do you think can contribute to Milton's public safety other than fire and police? What do you think can contribute to Milton's public safety other than the fire and police department?
Well, our ambassadors, can you hear me? It's my third mic. Okay. Is it better? Okay, well, I'll just speak out from the car.
Eat the mic.
Absolutely, yeah. Carl, can we get another mic up here?
Testing. No, not Carl. I can speak.
No, they can't hear in the back.
Does it work? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right, so is the question, what else can contribute to fire and safety?
Yes.
I'm very big on our ambassador program. I think that that can be built out. I've seen our ambassadors at school crossings and other places around town, at events. I think that's wonderful. I'm a big fan of Fire Corps. I've recently gotten behind the Community Connect Program. And I joined it the other day, and that's where you give information about your home and your pets and the people there so that if there is an emergency and the fire department shows up, they know what pets to look for. All of these things are important. There are so, thank you, sir. There are so many opportunities in these, what's called softer programs that surround fire and police that I would, wherever we have an engaged population that wants to pursue it, I am right there with you to help you. Do you want your mic back?
Yes.
I like this one.
Thank you. Councilman Morrig?
Yeah, I think we can continue to, Councilman Cokerly said something about the Fire Corps. That's a group of volunteers that come and help out. When our firemen go out to a fire, they're there to assist. They bring water, they bring food, additional things to actually help out. As far as the ambassador program, I think that's something that we're still working through, how we can improve on that. When we talk about additional safety, even on our trails, we haven't had an issue with crime. But I think we can look at different programs and see what we could do to make emergency services or 911, like a solar program, like we have down on the Greenway. That may be something we can look at doing actually on our own trail system. So you're not dependent, if you get a mile back on the trail, you're not dependent upon somebody driving by to actually help you. There's actually a phone that we could do. So I think there's different things that we continue to do to actually improve from public safety.
Thank you. And Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I don't want to be redundant. I think the ambassador program's a great program. The Fire Corps, I learned a lot about at Milton Touch a Truck just a few weeks ago. That is a fantastic service. And if you've not registered your house with them, please do so. It knows how many people are in your house, whether you have pets, whether you have a handicapped person and the like. So just a phenomenal service. The one thing that I went through years ago is the Citizens in Training. I think I got that acronym right. Awareness. We have 48,000 residents in Milton. Just the awareness of what you guys can do, as we collectively can do, to help fight and prevent crime. It's amazing when you talk to the police and the fire department. Knowledge, awareness, outreach, social media, everybody's on social media. The city can play a large role in driving that education and building that awareness within the community.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Morrig. I know roundabouts were touched on earlier. But they've become a staple in Milton, on staple, a staple of Milton roads. But they've been a cause for concern. Do you think these structures are effective at lessening the number of accidents and slowing down fast drivers? If not, what other avenues should Milton take to address road safety?
Can you say, repeat the very beginning? I'm sorry, didn't understand.
Sure. Roundabouts have become a staple of Milton roads, but have become a cause for concern. Do you think these structures are effective at lessening the number of accidents and slowing down fast drivers? If not, what other avenues should Milton take to address road safety?
I think the primary thing with roundabouts actually was getting the traffic flow. We had a lot of four-way stops all over Milton, which that impacted. If you'd go out during rush hour in the morning or evening, you'd see traffic stacked up for like a mile at the different intersections. So I think that was the primary thing that we wanted to do with the roundabouts, was to try to increase traffic flow so that you're not sitting at stop signs, idling, trying to get through. As far as accidents, I've not heard, if properly designed, I think they actually help with the traffic flow. I think we can continue to try to do education because once in a while you'll get at one of those traffic circles and you find that people will not let you in or they, they're, I think you need to be actually a little bit neighborly when you're doing that so people actually take a chance. But as far as whether or not they're negative from a safety standpoint, I don't think so. But the design is essential. And we have to design, with public safety designs, each of those depending on the actual intersection. I think it has to be independent. So if you look, we've got different types of designs, different places.
Thank you. And Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I'm a fan of roundabouts. I mean, it just reduces the congestion. Where I used to stop for a long, long time, I'm able to maneuver my way through the city in a much more effective and efficient manner. I think speed radars is a big opportunity. Speeding in Milton has become just incredibly prevalent and dangerous. I think speed radars, which I believe the city has ordered or has ordered more to be installed within the community, fully support that. Crosswalks, knocked on a lot of doors in Crab Apple. Lot of concern from citizens around speeding cars and the need for more crosswalks. I think that too will deter the speed at which cars are traveling through heavily dense pedestrian walkway areas.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cokerly?
There's been a national study that there are more fender benders with roundabouts, but that overall four-way stops, you have more serious accidents. So, you know, there's a balance there. What I'm seeing is people are just going now too fast in the roundabouts. It's all about acclimation. You get used to it and then you, you know, speed through. So next up in our roads group is what are the traffic calming devices that are going to be used coming out of the roundabouts and going into the roundabouts? And you're going to see some. I should also mention though that we are getting lower speed limits on three roads, Freemanville, Bethany, and Providence. It's a long process with, okay, thank you. I'm out of time.
Thank you. And Mr. Kramer? Actually, we're entering another theme, you guys. So this one's about business and development. My first question for Mr. Kramer is Milton voters passed a $25 million green space bond in 2016. And there is about $5.2 million left. Do you think Milton got its money's worth? Do you think Milton needs another green space bond or even a parks bond?
Yeah, I know we have about five to six million left, as you alluded to. And I think we need to spend it, and the sooner we spend it, the better. It's the taxpayers' dollars, and they should get access to that land. A lot of that land is sitting idle. It's beautiful, beautiful land. And I would like to see more residents get access to that land. With regards to parks, obviously, we just had an acquisition of a parcel for active parks. We'll see if it goes there or not, and certainly want the community to chime in and provide feedback and guidance on that. Whether we use it for that allotted purpose, or whether we allocate it to green space, or we sell it and go buy another parcel for active parks, I'm not so convinced we need to raise money for active parks. Seems that we just spent money to acquire a lot just for that.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cokerly?
Thank you.
Carl, could we actually have Councilwoman Cokerly's mic fixed wherever you are?
I was on TV for four years, but you'd think it's been, it's been a long time since I held a microphone. Okay, I'm going to go ahead then. I think the question was whether I would support another green space bond? Was that basically in the $5.2 million that's sitting?
Right, or a parks bond.
Okay. We are very strategically keeping that $5.2 million and watching a couple of properties because they're located where we think would make people very happy. At some point, those opportunities will go away and we'll have a clear decision of where to allocate that money. The green spaces that we have purchased are beginning to get, well, some of them are getting a lot of use. Some are beginning to get more use. And then we, you know, we have to evaluate appropriate usage and safety and all that kind of stuff. Citizen input on that has been very strong, and that's been good. Would I support another green space bond? Well, the question is, would you? Because if you would, then I will. I mean, that's how it works, and that's how I feel. I will certainly study the big picture and communicate everything. The city will all communicate everything to the populace, but you'll be voting on it. That's how it works, and so I'll be interested to see what you think.
Thank you. And Councilman Morrig?
Yes, I was a big proponent of the green space bond. I think we were trying to look at how do we actually preserve areas without having additional development? And the community spoke up loudly, saying, yes, we'll pay additional taxes to get that. I think, as Councilman Cokerly said, the $5.2 million, we need to be careful how we spend it. We're really looking at strategic locations. I think we also need to look at other areas around Highway 9 where we could get some green space in this area. As far as an additional floating other bond, I'm not, I guess I had 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Cokerly, the city's green print community meetings have had quite a lot of turnout. One question the strategy seeks to answer is the balance between green spaces for open use and conservation. What is your ideal balance?
Well, I see a different plan in the future. I see the opportunity for a group for environmental education and protection because we need the experts to help us balance out. Where should people be? Where should the animals be? When should it change? What's the best way to use the properties? How do we keep people safe? So I think it's an initiative that will evolve. But we have to take some fresh thinking to it because we have a lot of great properties. They're all very different, and we need to have them used. But, you know, would I love to see people walking around Birmingham Park and be able to go into gazebos and learn about what they're seeing? Would I love to be able to have, you know, guided trails with experts walking around telling people and their families what they're doing? I mean, or what they're seeing, what they're experiencing. I'd like to see all of it, and I'd like people just to have leisure time in these parks. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Morrig?
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Absolutely. The city's green print community meetings have had quite a lot of turnout. One question the strategy seeks to answer is the balance between green spaces for open use and conservation. What is your ideal balance?
I'm not going to go with a percentage, per se. I think green space, there's specific stipulations that we can actually, is required for us to purchase the property. I think we need to do more with the property that we actually have. I think we need to open up so that you, the citizens, can use it. We have some of our places that today are no trespassing. I think we need to look at what we can do to actually open up more. I have walked around Birmingham Park. I think we need to actually improve some of the trails there because they're pretty treacherous walking on. But I think we can continue to make our green space open to public. I think that's important because passive parks are an important part. It's not just active parks, especially as those of us who are starting to age. It's important that you have a place that you can actually go and enjoy.
Thank you. And Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, based on the data that I've seen, having sat on Parks and Rec, is people do want to use our green spaces. They do want to see them opened up. They do want to go on hiking. They want to do bird watching. That was in the survey results, high on the survey results. Now, unless the land is just not suitable, right, for pedestrian usage and passive use, then that's fine. I mean, we can do the studies to determine that. But in general, I would say, let's open up our green spaces and let's give access to it, to the citizens.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cokerly?
Okay, does this work? Mic number four, five. Would you repeat the question, please? Thank you.
Sure thing. The city's green print community meetings have had quite a lot of turnout.
Oh, I did that one. I did that.
Oh, excuse me. Next question.
Do you want to answer it again?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, this question's going to be directed to Mr. Kramer. A petition against a proposed active sports park on Hopewell Road has gathered more than 1,800 signatures. A rough design of the 40-acre park shows three multipurpose fields that would sit next to a horse farm. The design was drafted in 2021 but had not been brought to the public for review. First, what is your position on this proposed park? How do you plan to engage residents about upcoming decisions you'll be asked to make?
Yeah, here's my opinion. We do need more active parks, right? The population has since doubled since we built Bell Memorial. We literally have parents forming human walls out on our fields for safety reasons. So there's no question, and the data shows, and it's in our master plan, that we do need more active parks. The question is where, right? The question is where? Is the Hopewell location the right location? Perhaps not. I'm not married to that. I didn't vote on that. If the citizens don't want it there and it's not an ideal place for an active park, so be it. Let's repurpose it. Let's sell it and go buy a piece of land that is more suitable for an active park. But the bottom line is, we do need active parks, and we do need the community involvement to understand where the most desirable location is for the city.
Thank you. Councilman Morrig?
Yes, I think we do need more active park space. The question is where? In acquiring that property over on Hopewell, I think, and I'll take the blame on this too, we were not told by staff or aware that there was an active horse farm on the north side of that, just ordering. With our commitment to equestrian lifestyle and existing horse farms, it makes no sense to actually put active parks with amplified audio and music and lights and noise right next to a horse farm. So I think we've heard from the community that we need to take a look at that. What that ends up ultimately, we'll see. And that's where I think we need to actually get input from the community. But I'm not married to that location. I actually think there's probably better locations around the city where we could get additional fields. And I think that's what we need to continue to look at, as well as get input from the citizens.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cokerly?
I'm a firm no on that location, and I've stated that before. And the reason for that is I know the property much better now. But I am a firm yes on the possibilities of that property, not certainly for active parks because it's not suited for that with the back acreage is very problematic and close to a horse farm, et cetera, et cetera. But it connects to Providence Park, and a boardwalk can be built. And then you have an 80-acre park. So it's up to you, the citizens, to get involved and see if we want this opportunity. I'm going to unveil a plan soon, and I'm out of time. I'll tell you in the closing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cokerly.
My pleasure.
All right, the next question is for Councilman Morrig. Milton has used court-settled eminent domain seven times since its incorporation. What are your views on the use of government authority over private land in the city of Milton?
I didn't hear the very beginning, the government that you say?
Milton has used court-settled eminent domain seven times since its incorporation. What are your views on the use of government authority over private land in the city of Milton?
I can tell you, we as a council try not to use eminent domain. We try to work with the landowners. We try to find a way to actually go through. I don't think government needs to do overreach and say, we're going to take your property because we can use it better. In some of the cases, it had to do with intersections, and we actually tried to work with the property owner to come up with what would be an equitable amount. But I don't think that eminent domain should be used freely. I think you have to be very, very judicious on when you're going to use it.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
This one's simple to me. Eminent domain is your nuclear option. People have land rights. We should respect that. Unless it is a dire, dire circumstance, we should never employ eminent domain.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cokerly?
I think that two different terms are getting conflated here. There's eminent domain, and then there's condemnation. And we've done a lot of friendly condemnation, which I think is the numbers. And that's something that even sometimes, if there are title problems, that HOAs might want us to do to sort through that. I don't know of a true eminent domain, certainly not in my five years. And I had asked a question about this like a year or two ago, and there was nothing recorded on that. I do think it is more the friendly condemnation type that is a court proceeding. I could be wrong, but I have looked into it at some level.
Okay. Just to be clear, court-settled eminent domain has happened seven times, which involves litigation, which is separate from condemnation. There's three different types of eminent domain.
Okay, well.
Thank you. And Councilman Morrig?
I think I answered that first.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Kramer, what is your position on flag lots in Milton?
On what?
What is your position on flag lots in Milton?
Flag lots? So this comes down to land rights, right? It's not a subject matter that I am an expert on. But what I would say is there are land rights. And I think the owners of these, this land should have appropriate access to build homes. homes on their lots. I understand that the city council just passed restrictions and I think it was an attempt to appease both sides of the issue where we don't have high density look and feel, but still the ability to build on one or 1.5 minimum acres. I don't know well enough, but it sounds like the balance has been struck, but I would err on the side of land rights than not.
Thank you. And Councilwoman MoRig?
Yes, we did vote on flag lots and when it came to commercial or like such large subdivisions, we get, we said a definite no. We said that you buy, if you buy a property and develop it, you develop it the way it's set up. You don't get to carve up and to add additional density and put flag lots. When it came to flag lots on open roads where people own their property, we actually did vote to allow flag lots. The planning commission came forward and said that they wanted us to deny it and we said no because of property rights. It's important that people have the opportunity, if they want to, if they want to have a family complex and their home, their existing home is up on the front of the property, there's no way to, to parcel off the back unless you do have a flag lot. So for that reason, we said when it comes to open roads and private property, yes, you have the opportunity to do it and I fully support the decision that we made.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cokerly?
My guiding light as a representative on council regarding property rights is to say, okay, people have inherent property rights. I have property rights, but how do I avoid unintended consequences for your neighbors, for you in the future, if you want to sell your properties, et cetera? When planning commission denied this, it came to us. I did not think it should be denied. Got involved, met with realtors, met with land use, civil engineers, people like that. And I think we struck a good balance and people seemed to go away happy that flag lots are permissible with some restrictions, width of the lot, length of the stem, what it all, you know, what the ratios are. And there was, been no blowback since then on that. So I think we're good.
Thank you. And Mr. Kramer? The idea of a development authority has been circulating around the community, which is a short-term work program identified in the comprehensive plan. Would you support the creation of a development authority in Milton?
Well, I just learned about what a development authority is about a week ago because I was accused of supporting development authorities. So when I became accused of it, I had to go research it and understand what the definition of a development authority is. What I've come to learn is it's actually in our 2040 comprehensive plan. It's in our comprehensive land use plan that is supported by city council. So I'm not a subject matter on, on development authorities, but I will tell you this, I will not relinquish control if given control and serve on council. I will not allocate my decision making rights to a development authority. Mr. Haney was articulate in the process of development in this community. We have committees for a certain reason. It works. It works well. And I would certainly adhere to that and never relinquish control to any sort of authority or committee or alliance or anything of that nature.
Thank you. And Councilwoman MoRig?
Yeah, the development authority is in the strategic plan as an option. That is something that I don't think we need as a community. I, I think we, we developed Milton, people who've moved here, moved here because it's special, because we have developed it a certain way. That's, that has been intentional. That hasn't been by chance. To give up any, any right of council to make a decision on development and have a development authority comprised of developers, where you, where they're going to be the experts to tell you how you need to develop things, to me, that's opposite of why we formed the city of Milton. We formed the city of Milton so that we could determine our destiny. We determine our zoning. We look at the direction that we, we want to go. So I feel very strongly, you know, we can, we can look at a development authority, but I'm not going to support it as long as I'm on council because I, I don't think we need it. I don't think it's necessary and I think it could have, when we talk about unintended consequences, I think you open yourself up when you give away your authority.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cokerly?
At Monday night's city council meeting, a number of people accused us of having plans for a development authority. After council, a number of us looked at each other and said, what? So there is no plan for a development authority. There is no plan and I'm certainly not part of it. I did go through the 2040 comprehensive plan and finally on page 211, I found a reference to it. But the comprehensive plan is full of ideas. It's not necessarily graven in stone that we're going to do any of this stuff. It's for consideration. I don't know how that started, that rumor, but we don't need another layer. We need, we need our community development people to be very accessible. We need council to be accessible and we need our three committees that deal with these issues to be on top of it. We need people to come to us, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer? Where do you stand on sewer extension in the city? For incumbents, have you ever voted to extend sewer? If so, why? And for you, Mr. Kramer, would you ever? Why or why not?
I believe in land preservation and low density and the way to maintain that is not extending sewer. No, I will not extend sewer.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Cokerly?
I moved here in 1997 and Julie Bailey told me that the way to keep this as low as density as possible was no sewer, never, ever. That's all it took. I've never, there was one opportunity to vote for it. It was very contentious. There was some legal back and forth. Wouldn't budge, never will.
Thank you. And Councilwoman MoRig?
Yeah, I think, again, one of the big things when we formed the city, living where I live, when I moved up here before and I lived in District Three, we had cows, pastures. That all went away and Fulton County determined the high density. So when we became a city, part of that was taken over zoning control so that we could try to preserve the land. I am not for sewer extension. There was an opportunity to do a conservation subdivision and I was one of the, the key votes to say, no, we're not going to have high density on AG1.
Thank you. And we're going to switch gears. We're going to begin talking about elections. Milton's efforts to conduct its own election has been a contentious topic. Spanning back to July 2021, when residents came forward with questions of integrity in the 2020 general election and added election costs from Fulton County. Mr. Kramer, I'll begin with you. How confident have you been in Fulton County's operations of elections so far?
Of Fulton County?
Yes.
Did you mean Milton's?
No, Fulton County's operations up until this year because Fulton County has operated Milton's elections.
Yeah. Amber, I've had no problem with Fulton County elections. Again, I'm, I'm not a subject matter expert on what went well, what didn't go well, but I was able to vote when I did and honestly, I've had no issues with Fulton. Where I have concerns from a process standpoint is with how Milton has handled its own elections.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman MoRig?
Yeah, as far as Fulton County, when we formed the city of Milton, we had an option as a city to actually take over our own elections. It was not a priority. We chose not to do that because we could do an intergovernmental agreement, just like we do with picking up dead deer rather than us to build a department. However, in 2021, when we were brought, brought forward the IGA, it was 103% increase from what we had been charged two years before. That caused concern on my part and that's when I called and said, let's take a look at number one, can we in fact look at the processes that the state requires because it's a state mandated process? And then can we save money? That's what the feasibility study was about. That's what we went after. I've, I've read things in the paper saying that the city manager wasn't for it from the beginning. There's different things, but I can tell you from my standpoint, what I fought for, I didn't want to give any of our tax dollars to Fulton County, especially when they raised it 100%, 100%. And had we gone with them again today, it would at least be an additional 300% above what we had the time before.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Cokerly?
So I'm not going to throw bombs, but I will say that I have had some concerns with Fulton County in the past. I've been voting a long time and I lived in Atlanta and there were just a couple of things that were just, you know, cumbersome or a little weird. My husband, Robert, had a situation in the 2020 that gave me pause and I'm, and I'm not taking a political stand here. It was a, it was a question of whether the vote was, there was just a moment that didn't appear to be competent, I think, and, and raised question with Robert and the other people who were in there. So that was unfortunate, but when the citizens came forward and said, hey, what about this? I was a champion of that because I think, you know what? If we can do it close to home, better, more efficient, more efficiency and cost efficiently, then why not? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman MoRig? What is your position on Milton divorcing itself from Fulton County to run its own local election?
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
What is your position on Milton divorcing itself from Fulton County to run its own local election this year?
And I'm sorry, I still did not hear it. I'd say it one more time, please.
What is your position on Milton divorcing itself from Fulton County to run its own election?
As far as us running our own election, I'm fully supportive of that. I think it, it's, again, it's part of self-determination. Once we, as a council unanimously voted to say, we can save money, we want to run our own elections, it then became a city process. City council is not involved at all in determining the process, recruiting, recruiting poll workers, administering it. That's none of our, our purview. That's something that the city itself does. But I feel very confident that we're going to have a very good, safe and accurate election. I think we're actually going to be saving money. We'll see what the final number is when it comes down. It really depends. Fulton County has kind of been a moving target. At one time they said they would, they went from $2.96 and they said that they were going to charge us this year $9.16. I think that was reported in January. But as far as the election, I'm very confident that this is going to go off well. I think it's actually going to be one of the easiest to vote when you go in and register. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I'm going to answer that in two parts. From a policy standpoint, I think we got to account for the costs. I don't think the costs are accurate. I think we got to account for every last penny. I don't think city staff was ever included in costs, which they need to be because it's been a huge time suck for city staff. And did it benefit the citizens? Most people I talk to and doors I knock on, they don't even know that it's at the three polling locations that we, that we're at. They still think it's at the schools and they still think it's at the libraries. So does it benefit the citizens? We'll see. From a process standpoint, it was flawed. The election feasibility committee was completely partisan. The staff was absolutely ignored and you can read all about that through open records and consultants were pushed upon city staff. The process was flawed.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Councilwoman Cokerly?
And since last but not least, would you repeat the question so I can get all the nuances again, please?
Sure. What is your position on Milton divorcing itself from Fulton County to run its own local election this year?
I voted for the opportunity for us to try it. My hope is, is that we have a very successful self-governance in the election and that we go forward with this opportunity. There is so much angst around the country on elections of all types and how they're run that bringing it closer to home appeals to me. But I agree with Mr. Kramer that it's extremely important that we're transparent about all the costs, about any operational situations or problems and, and put it all out there and together we'll come to a good decision for next time around.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cokerly? How would you ensure a nonpartisan election remains nonpartisan in its construction? Do you believe the city has done this?
Well, to your question, do I believe the city has done this? I think that those at the city who have been charged with running the election have tried their darndest to keep it on the straight and narrow. I've used the word before and it's been played out in the media that there have been a lot of encumbrances. That's a euphemism for meddling and interference and problems that I think will have been well played out in the media. I don't think we'll have those in the future because they've been played out. So I am hopeful that, that we're on the right course. I have every confidence in our city manager and our city staff to run this election now that all the people meddling are on the sidelines.
Thank you. And Councilwoman MoRig?
Yeah, there, there's been a lot of accusations about meddling. We haven't even started the election. As far as meddling, our, our legal counsel sent, because there were letters that were written to the state election board, our legal counsel on September 1st wrote a letter to the state explaining that everything we've done within the city as far as our election has followed the law. The accusations that have been made as far as meddling are not true. The accusations of trying to force the city manager to make decisions. I don't have that authority. I can't. That was stated by, by our, our council to the state elections board. And as far as the meddling, that was exonerated. That did not happen. That, that was a story that continues to get perpetuated in the press. I hear it. I read, I read the different articles. I think it's very interesting that this, we continue to go back and actually talk about the election feasibility study when we're less than two weeks away from running our election.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
As I stated before, I think from a process standpoint, it was flawed from day one. It was incredibly partisan. You look who was on that elite election feasibility committee and it was just completely partisan. You look at the open records, you read the emails, you read the texts. You judge for yourself whether or not you thought that was on the straight and narrow, whether you thought that was ethical behavior and that was transparent. There was no buy-in and feedback from the citizens. The staff was pushed aside. Read the emails, read the texts. We can do better than that.
Thank you. And for the next question, in previous years Fulton County had eight polling locations in Milton. What are your thoughts about Milton reassessing the need for a third polling location in District Three? Should there be more? Can we start with you, Mr. Kramer?
Listen, going from eight to three is a big deal. Reducing the hours of voting is a big deal. Voting is a, a, an honor, a privilege, a right of the citizens. We should be making it easier, not harder. The third polling location, at a minimum, we should have three representative of each district. I think we do a post-mortem after this election and again reconcile the costs, including the city staff, time of allocation of their time and understand, did it fit the needs of the citizens? Maybe three was enough. Maybe it's not.
Thank you.
We'll find out.
And Councilwoman Cokerly?
I think the media has accurately chronicled that I was stunned and quite, quite strong in my opinion that we had to have the third location over in the Highway nine corridor. Eventually, everybody came around and we adopted that, but it set a bad tone. We have a tremendous communications opportunity now and, and it's a bit of a hill to get people to understand where to go, what to do. But I think that how we have it laid out now will service the public.
Thank you. And Councilwoman MoRig?
Yeah, as far as the, the change from eight locations, when, when the feasibility study committee looked at how other cities do municipal elections when they run them, they only use one polling location both for advanced, advanced voting and day of voting. We decided we wanted to have two. We wanted to have one over on the west side at city hall for day of election voting and then have one over in Highway nine district for day of election. We were told by, by the city managers that we could not have it at the public safety complex. That was where we designated it. That's where we requested. It then went into discussion with the rest of the council. There was a decision to move it up to the other location. We had never said we were going to do three locations. We'd always had two. And again, it was about cost. We could have done it with one. We said, that's too drastic. Let's do it with two. Let's do it on the east and the west.
Thank you. Milton Families First is the only independent expenditure committee within Milton that has Milton in its name and Milton as an address. We have been flooded with inquiries about this group whose stated purpose is to promote public safety, responsible growth and government accountability. Mr. Kramer? Do you believe Milton Families First has a positive or negative effect on the community? Why? Why?
Well, I would say it's very polarizing. If anyone knows who Milton Families First is, we know who the individuals are and what has transpired in white columns. It is polarizing. I'll be very transparent and candid. They have endorsed me. I'm sure some of you in the audience have gotten something in the mail. But let me be clear. While I'm grateful for their endorsement, I am no way collaborating with Milton's Family First. I'm running my campaign completely independent. They're not allowed to collaborate with me based on the, the makeup of their PAC. So, with that being said, grateful for the endorsement. I think it is polarizing. I look forward to getting beyond the election season and getting back to what matters. And at the end of the day, that's all of you. It's the citizens.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kirkley?
Well, I want to run my own election, and I try to imagine the future, and I'm like, so are we going to have more independent committees? Where to from here? And I think that's problematic. So, I'm not a fan of independent committees. Milton's Families First will do what they do. Whether I'm affected by that in my campaign, I have no way of knowing. I look out in the future and I go, "Okay, well, maybe I'll do one that's called Apartments for Milton," and then I'll go sponsor anybody I don't want to win. You know, I mean, where does it stop? So, you know, to me, it's problematic. You can really tarnish somebody that way. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Moorig?
Yeah, I think it is problematic. We don't need a super PAC for a municipal election. It's made our election more like a national election with the vitriol and the stuff that's gone back and forth. I can tell you, when I see expenditures that are made directly to defeat Richard Moorig, they're putting money, that's, that's what they're for. It sounds good as far as the fam, Milton's Families First, but when you crawl underneath and you see what they're doing, what their intent is, I can tell you, I don't think it's healthy. I don't think it's good for our, our city. I think it divides people. We don't need a PAC telling us who we need to vote for.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kirkley. Should poll workers be encouraged to exercise neutrality in local political campaigns?
You blurred at the beginning. Would you say that again?
Should poll workers be encouraged to exercise neutrality in local political campaigns?
I think people are well-intentioned, and I do know in a couple cases, poll workers have asked about the appropriateness of meetings and things like that. Those are discussions that are had with the election superintendent. So, I think they're already encouraged. I think it's part of the training. If I'm wrong about that, I'm sure I'll hear about it, but my memory serves me that it is part of a discussion process.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Moorig?
As far as poll workers, I think poll workers are first private citizens. Until they step into the poll location and they work, they're not a poll worker. They can be hired as a poll worker, but they actually are not a poll worker. I know there's been a lot of press, a lot of things that have been speculated. I actually have been surveilled by our city manager for, for a meeting that I held, which was a perfectly legal meeting. Unfortunately, poll workers have been, these folks, a couple of folks have actually been slandered because of this, as if they did something illegal. So, we, we checked with the city attorney, we checked with the state. Poll, poll workers can also work, they, they do not give up their First Amendment rights to support whoever they want, including giving donations. And we do have even on one of our poll managers has actually made contribution to one of the candidates, Mr. Henny. So, to try to blame and say that poll workers are interfering with elections, or as one blogger stated, I will stop my comments, so you give me the zero.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, do they need to be neutral? No, they are citizens first and they do have an opinion, but we just got to be careful. I think the appropriate training's got to be provided in making sure that there is, that everything is transparent and done in an ethical manner. That's all.
Thank you. I know this was supposed to include at 8:30. I think now we can go ahead and begin some closing remarks. So, if Councilwoman Kirkley, could you start?
My pleasure. I was giving you input about the great things going on in Milton and tying it back to why I enjoy this job and I'm energized to do it longer if you so desire. I left you with information about density in the trophy club in particular. There are the potential of 135 to 140 lots there. So, for me and many of you, it's all about mitigating density all the time. There are only going to be 30 lots there. That's because we have a very smart community development team that's working with developers and working with builders, and we're figuring out ways to get large lots here. When I mentioned that people are coming in and paying cash, wasn't just making a gratuitous funny. It drives back to another point. People can sell their four, five, eight, 10 acres in total without having to break it up to get maximum yield because people will pay for the whole parcel and buy a farm or put their, their house on it, et cetera. So, we're seeing some exciting trends. Lot whips are going from 100 to 150 feet, which is much better for our, to lower density and also for appearances. Got so many things that are happening. The District of Mayfield is going to be fantastic, and that was from an individual citizen's ingenuity that started that. Fire Station Number Five is coming online. These are all things that I've been a part of. This work energizes me, your smarts, the things that the citizens bring to the table, the research that I've gotten from people. I'm like, whoa, that's great, to help me defeat things because I've needed to defeat a lot of issues, a lot of overreach in development. That's been something that's happened. So, I appreciate it. I just want to leave you this one thought. I've never been approached by a developer. It doesn't happen that way. But I do sit there and ideas come through and plans come through, and I'm, I'm happy to mitigate density. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, thank you again to everyone for coming out. Very much appreciate the opportunity. Like I started, I think we can do better, and that's why I'm sitting up here. All I want to be is a conduit between what the majority of the citizens in Milton want and what city staff executes. That is what I vow to you. Some of the areas that I mentioned, land preservation, low density, I will not extend sewer, despite what my opponent said he did, he is on record extending it twice. Highway Nine Development, I think we can do better. I think that's a commercial corridor that is a hidden gem, and we can make that a desirable village where we can have nice shops, nice restaurants, and make that a destination within Milton. Transportation infrastructure, it's got to be easier and safer to travel within Milton. That will be one of my focus areas. Passive and active parks, I won't belabor that point. I think we know we need both. Elimination of partisan politics and drama. Again, I go back to the Milton Herald. Every week, it's another story. There's a black cloud over Milton tarnishing this brand. We got to get back to a state of normalcy, in my opinion. This election comes down to two things, in my opinion. Partisan politics at the heart of city council or the citizens at the heart of city council? You get to vote. You get to decide, and I hope I earned your vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. And Councilman Moorig?
Yes, I appreciate you all coming out tonight, taking the time to listen and be interested. I'm running again not because I want to be a city councilman for another term. I'm running because I see things that are kind of in the offing that could actually change the way Milton is, has been developed and the direction we can go. I think there are things that are at risk. So, for, from that standpoint, I did say I'm going to do, I've, I've been involved in community for 26 years, helped bring Milton into place. I still have passion for this city. That's the reason I'm running again. We don't serve just the district we're in. I deal with people all over the city. Most of my calls actually don't come from District Three. They come from different places. So, I think it's important that we actually have representative, representatives that actually listen to you and support you and work for you. So, for me, I still see this as a great place. Like I mentioned, my daughter and son-in-law, they moved back here, and they weren't going to buy in Milton, but the more they drove around Milton, they saw the city services that we built and what we've done in this city, they said they wanted to move and buy. So, I'm excited about that. I still think our best days are ahead of us. I look at where we started when it was just a vision in 2006, and I'm very, very proud of what we've built. It's amazing what we've built. That's why so many people want to still come here. And as far as low density, yeah, I think we continue. We have to enforce that. We put in the urban growth boundaries to try to reinforce that as councils change, you're only one, one council away from actually changing the ordinances. They're not locked in forever. So, what some things that we've done have been actually trying to look into the future and how do we actually protect what it is that we want in Milton, what it is that we love. So, my heart is in, in this. My heart's in Milton. Like I said, I've lived here 27 years, and I'd love to earn your vote again, so please contact me if you've got questions also. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And there you have it, folks. Thank you for coming out. We really appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Thank you.[1248.22][1248.22][applause][1249.22][1249.22][music]
Are these cups you get to take?
I think they are. I'm hoping they are.
I'm hoping too. Are you?
Yeah.[1259.33][1259.33][applause]
Do you want me to support it and bring it home?
Yes.[1266.58][1266.58][applause]
She had prior commitments, but they are, I assume she has, because she has asked me, she's providing some of her comments and providing some of her parents' opinions about this opportunity. She had prior commitments. She's a theater teacher at the high school. I think they had a draft. She's been to that.
Yeah, I, I didn't think it was going to hold, but I figured that was a little bit issue. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's.[1315.15][1315.15][applause]
Yeah, I, I didn't think it was going to hold, but I figured that was a little bit issue. I think it's, I think it's.